Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just and all.
We stand for the moment of silence. Do we have any public comments? Okay, let's move to our discussion item about the facilities. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, we've, uh, discussed a few times now the need to, uh, come back together and really revisit our conversation on facilities. Uh, we've had conversations that really have gone back a couple years now. Uh, and if you take a look at the document that is in your packet and also up here on the screen, what's, uh, Aaron and myself were able to do is we went back through and scanned really board meeting, uh, minutes, um, former feasibility studies, former conversations with board supervisors, uh, members at meetings and such, and really created kind of a facilities chronological timeline. And if you look at that in your packet, it really begins, uh, February of twenty twenty-three. Uh, this was before many of us were here. In fact, this conversation on a preschool, uh, began before we were all here. Yeah, so it must have began begun with Dr. Benson, David, you were still here. Okay. So that was the very beginning, and that was, uh, pre-two thousand twenty-three, uh, two thousand twenty-two-ish.
Thank you.
Okay, two thousand twenty-two.
Yes, um, we had several meetings with, uh, Dr. Benson, and it was over at the, um, oh, it was here, second floor, I guess. And, um, I just, I ca- I remember Kathy Bender being there and, um, Richard, the chairman of the Board of Supervisors, um, Richard, um, Granger. Anyway, and, um, and Dr. Benson and, um, somebody from-
Mosley.
Mosley. There was nine of us. I just remember nine. And I remember the one, Fish was the, um, what's her name?
Jackie Fish.
Jackie Fish, I think, was there. So anyway, those were then, we had, um, several meetings, and it was about the preschool.
Excellent, okay. So what you'll, what you'll see here is really going all the way back to, to that time, starting with that final product of the Mosley Architectural Feasibility Study. Each, each one of those, uh, dates and, and documents associated with those dates is hyperlink. So if you weren't here and really want to get deep into some of the conversations that occurred between now and then, all of those are, um, documents that when you click on that green text, it'll take you to either the feasibility study or the meeting minutes, uh, and then it goes on, you know, with a number of things. So I, I don't think I need to walk everybody through all of that that we've done up to this point. Uh, as you, as you know where we are now, um, ju- just since November, we were sitting on a, uh, King George, um, referendum that, uh, the school, or excuse me, the community has requested the building of a new school. Uh, the school board came together and we had conversations about, uh, capacity issues and some of the things that we could address for capacity. You guys remember, remember, Carrie, I don't know if you were here yet. Or maybe that was like right around your first meeting. That's right. Uh, we were in the upstairs conference room and we talked about, we had a schematic and we talked about if we built a new school, this is how we could shuffle numbers. We talked about grading organizations and so on. Uh, and then since then, uh, the feasibility study, uh, for the vocational building was done and, uh, money was provided from, by the board of supervisors to, uh, conduct that feasibility study. Uh, and we're sitting on that feasibility study right now. As you all know, a lot of this conversation has to do with enrollment versus capacity, the number of students we have, uh, versus the number of students that we can accommodate. So if you take a look down, uh, this really kind of drives this conversation. You'll see our enrollment numbers, that date all the way back to twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And I think what's most important, if we go through that progression all the way up to twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six, is, uh, as we've begun this school year, our numbers are down right now. Uh, and we've taken a look at that in a, a lot of different ways. We've kind of assessed that and tried to theorize, and I've heard a number of different the- uh, theories right now as to why that number is down. We're at, as of today, we've got about a hundred and fifty-four less students this school year than we had last year. We had a much smaller number of, uh, kindergarten students, forty-four less kindergarten students, uh, enrolled this year than we had last year. And really, when we dig through that data, uh, it's not, we still have about the same number of homeschool students that we've had in the past. We've had, uh, we average around sixty homeschool student families that report to us. When I last checked, we were at fifty-eight this year. Uh, when you dig that, when you dig a lot of that data apart, we have reasons for each, um, family or each set of children that leave us. There's a lot of families right now that are leaving the state of Virginia from what we've seen. Uh, so there's been some theories. We've looked at Weldon Cooper. Weldon Cooper right now is saying the birth rate is much lower, uh, in the, in the most. So that could explain maybe the kindergarten situation. Uh, we've also theorized that with a lot of the changes with the federal government employees, maybe a lot of folks are leaving Virginia because of, uh, layoffs in the federal government. Uh, we, we see a lot of, uh, people going to far-off places like Texas and obviously Maryland is, is another big one, but we've got a lot of students leaving the state of Virginia right now. So we are down, uh, in total numbers, but if you go down to the final slide, and all I'm doing right now is just kind of priming the pump, and I'll turn this over to you guys to talk a little more about what you think we need in terms of facilities moving forward. But if you take a look at our numbers and break them down by school, uh, our, our, currently our high school is still over capacity. Uh, our high school is, uh, accommodates fifteen hundred students. And again, these numbers are very fluid right now. Uh, they, I, I even have updated numbers from today, uh, which are, which are more accurate than the numbers that you see in that final slide. As of today, we have, uh, fifteen hundred and eleven students enrolled at the high school. Um, and, and we can accommodate fifteen hundred. As of today, we have one thousand sixty-six students at the middle school. That building accommodates one thousand five hundred and thirty-eight. So we've always known that our middle school has a decent amount of capacity following the renovation. Uh, and then our three elementary schools. Right now, as of today, King George Elementary School has five hundred and ninety-two K through five students, but a hundred and twenty preschool students to add to that. Potomac Elementary School has five hundred and forty capacity. For Potomac Elementary School is seven hundred and fifty-one. And Sealston Elementary School this year has six hundred and eighty-one students. Currently, uh, capacity for that is seven seventeen. So if you remember last year, with the inclusion of the preschool at King George Elementary, Sealston was over capacity. Uh, it's now under capacity. Uh, King George Elementary School is probably our closest school to capacity right now if you include the preschool students, which we obviously have to. Uh, and then Sealston has some, some room right now at five hundred and forty and a capacity of seven fifty-one. So again, right now, our secondary, or excuse me, specifically our high school is, is up over capacity and, uh, our elementaries are, are well within capacity at the moment. So as you all know, we've talked about a number of different options. We've talked about a, uh, fourth elementary school. We've talked about the need for a preschool. Uh, and we've most recently talked about, uh, the need for expanding our vocational center at King George High School. So I think our desire and motivation this evening is really to get consensus from the board on what direction we need to prioritize moving forward, uh, and then what direction we need to communicate with our board of supervisors on that the school board desires to, to pursue.
So I think how we'll, um, we'll just go roundtable and everybody can, you know, give their input, but my question for you, Dr. Board, before we go, we go on is, um, so the referendum addressed the preschool slash elementary school issue. And then, um, I, I think at one point you had said we had money in the budget for the VOTEC in addition to that. Am I, did I misunderstand?
We just had money in last year's budget from the board of supervisors for the feasibility study that was completed for the vocational center. Uh, right now, a- and you'll s- you have a tab or one of those green, um, uh, links where it says upon, it's your July eighth, upon school board request, RRM provides cost models for vocational buildings. So you remember, they came to us and they gave us a presentation and they gave us that first cost model. And then we asked them, we said, what would it, what would the cost be if we expanded the footprint of that building? If we knocked that building down and build an entirely new building on it? And at the end of that meeting, we also asked, what would it cost if we did a two-story building at the vocational center? You can see all of those, uh, cost estimates there, and they also show you really in that document, if you click on it, what, uh, what the footprint of that building would look like. And thi- this is the existing vocational building in between the middle and high school. So, uh, right now, we don't have money set aside for that. Uh, the highest estimate there for that two-story building at the very bottom of that is somewhere in the ballpark of eighteen million. That's the high end, and that includes, uh, escalation of eight percent, depending on when we ask for that money. Uh, and today dollars, it costs, it looks like it's seventeen million seven. And then the prices get less expensive as you move up to the options that, that are above.
But when we talk about that, we have to talk about turn keys and those, those, those facilities that we put in there are gonna cost quite a bit if we use culinary, if you, we use automotive. All that stuff's gotta be included in this fifty-seven mil that we're talking about.
That's correct. So if I remember correctly, these cost estimates, I think they gave us the analogy, this includes everything, that if you took the building and flipped it upside down, it wouldn't fall out. So when you're talking about equipment, um, for culinary programs and you're talking about instructional supplies that would not be involved in the building, those would be extra. And if you're talking extra cost, you're talking instructional positions, you're talking, um, you know, there is some long-term cost that would be associated with opening that vocational building. Additional, admit, you know, possibly additional, uh, custodial staff, um, food services wouldn't be part of that. Could, we might need some type of administrative support in that building. There are some other things that we need to consider in that building.
Just, just the welding machines alone and, and, uh, HBAC and the electricity and the plumbing, all of this. No, it was not. It was not part of the fifty-seven million, but could we use that for that fifty-seven million? Could we use that fifty-seven million for that? Yes, yes. And I, I personally think right now with the way AI is going, that that's the way we need to go because, you know, a lot of these, a lot of these jobs that are out there now are not gonna be there in fifteen years, you know, but things like electrician and plumbing and HBAC and welding, none of that's gonna go away. That's something that's needed in the county. But, you know, AI's gonna take a lot of other jobs away.
Didn't we already decide that building a new VOTEC was more reasonable and renovated?
Cost effective, yeah.
Took a vote on that?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure we're still in agreement with that.
What we need to agree on is that the priorities of what building, so, um, just-
Yeah, what are?
Just looking, well, we, looking at the numbers, um, it looks like, obviously, the, the high school is overcrowded. And then if you look at the number, just look at the number of students at the middle school, right? They're all gonna be moving up to the high school. Um, so, uh, I guess we'll just go around, around the room and see who thinks that the VOTEC should be number one and who thinks that a new elementary school, I don't know how else to do it. Do you guys agree?
Well, yeah, but I think we need to know what options we have, one through five, whatever. So we have VOTEC.
So I, I think we can do it in phases. So I, I think the first one is, is, you know, what do we prioritize right now in terms of expansion or reopening of the vocational center? Uh, the referendum was for the fourth elementary school, which was the fifty-seven million dollar request, uh, which also included the preschool at the time. So really, you know, we're talking about how do we serve our needs at the elementary level? That would be the fourth elementary school. And we've talked a little bit about where our elementary numbers are right now.
We have VOTEC, we have elementary-
I think those are our three kind of general big options.
There's a third. I'd like to go around if we have further questions. I, I agree with what you said, but I have questions.
Well, I have a comment that we asked our community, right, to vote on an elementary school referendum, right? And they voted for it, so if we don't take action, we're not listening to our constituents.
We only gave them one option, though. If you were to go to them and say, do we want this, this, or this, I think they'd be happy with any of these.
Well, and I think it's important to note that it's very important to listen to our constituents. Uh, that referendum, we, we all had some gro- some, some heartache on, on how that whole thing went through as well in terms of, um, and we, and unfortunately it passed, but I think it passed because, as to your point, Colleen, I think our community is very interested in, in us investing in education and investing in our kids and, and whatever fashion we think that is most appropriate.
Okay, so-
Give mine.
I was just gonna say, you have, everybody has questions, so why don't we start with the questions? And you were gonna-
Is there a possibility, I mean, what, what we're looking for is we need to have something to take to the board of supervisors in December. And we put together a ten-year plan between now and then to present that to the board of supervisors in December. In that ten-year plan, we can talk about, uh, VOTEC building. We can talk about preschool. And one of the things that some of us have, I think Kathy brought this up, was, and it, I guess we're seeing it's working really well with preschool right now at the elementary school, is that we put a preschool in each elementary building. And that we can do if, and here's one way to do that, is to bring the middle school to five, five, six, seven, and eight. That way we free up on at least, you know, one grade or one grade level in each, uh, elementary school. And that will take care of the preschool needs that we need. Uh, the only thing that's left out then is your office is still the same, you know? But, but, I mean, but we need a consensus of the five of us uh, on a ten-year plan, um, so that the board of supervisors can be able to move along with what they have too. Because hopefully they're working on a ten-year plan now, something for the county, and that, you know, they can fit that right in there on a, some type of a ten-year plan, if we can come up with that.
I, that's a great idea. I just wanted to ask a question, because it's a great idea, but I had questions before we go to ideas. And so I think something that I heard from board of supervisors over the last three years, actually, um, even before the change in some of the supervisors, was they didn't necessarily agree that the need was there. So, yeah, I, I'm concerned that if they look at where it is today, it will kind of confirm what I had heard it from several board of supervisors, both those that were there and are there now, that there's no need to go forward with a lot of these things. So I think, um, Weldon Cooper is one aspect that we could use, but I think also is, okay, I see this year, then we look at the last several years since I've been on the board the last over three and a half years. What I'm concerned with, okay, obviously, up until this year, we were like this. We were on, on an uphill trend with basically everything. You had mentioned many times, Dr. Boyd, two percent. Uh, this year, that's changed. My question would be, the better way to look at that is what has it been for the previous period of time, such as the last five years, the last ten years? Because whenever you look at these kinds of things, there are so many variables involved, but one of the big variables is what has been the trend for the last, like, ten to fifteen years? And if it's consistently been, even though there's probably a couple of dips over those years, you know, to give an example, if you have three years, that all of a sudden we're at a two to five percent, then all of a sudden one year it's down, then the next three we have this, well, you don't look at the one that was down. You look at what has been the trend. And so I think we need to have, to present that. Because when you look at this year, that's gonna, um, verify what I've heard so some of the board of supervisors. So do we have that information going back?
No, I, I, I think you're absolutely right, Mr. Bush. I don't think we wanna, you know, take a look at one year and kind of think that that's what the future is gonna look like.
Exactly.
Couple of things. I can tell you right now, uh, Mr. Davis has mentioned on the board of supervisors, taking a look. So you're talking about demog- demographicers, what is, I can't say it right, but, um, it's Weldon Cooper. I mean, Weldon Cooper will do this for, I mean, if you really want to do a full-scale demographic study, it's, it's, it's a healthy cost associated with it. I know the, I know the board of supervisors is considering it right now, and they're taking a look at, um, things like the number of houses that potentially can be built in the county, uh, and, and some of those other factors that I think are important. Uh, this, speaking of important factors, this is the first year right now that we're going through, which, where Hopyard is completely built out. So Hopyard is, this is the first year in, in which they're not building more houses in Hopyard. Although there's other houses in other communities come popping up in King George as well. So I know the board of supervisors is working on that demographic study right now. You can take a look back and see, um, where we are in terms of population in that, in that graph there. It has been a steady incline up until this past year. I can tell you, just if you look at some of the information on the Weldon Cooper website and you start asking questions of those that work for Weldon Cooper, they're having a very difficult time post-COVID, try to, trying to figure out what's going on demographically. Uh, there's a lot of factors in play, uh, with the federal government, which Virginia, uh, has a, is influenced greatly by. Uh, there's a lot of things right now that's making it very difficult for even experts like that to make predictions about where we stand as, you know, like, community.
I, I know that, and you're, you're right, but just looking at where we are as a school, what was it like in the last ten to fifteen years, just for us? Uh, you're right.
Yeah, so going back to twenty eighteen, you can see-
I know, do we, can we go back farther than that or not?
Uh, we, we probably could go back further than that.
And just in my experience, seven years is not enough when you're talking about this.
Yeah, we can, we can go back, we can go back further than that. I, I started in King George in twenty fifteen. And I, I, you guys have heard me say before, the high school, um, the population at the high school when I started in twenty fifteen was one thousand two hundred and thirty-four students, because it was one, two, three, four when I started. And it's fifteen eleven now. So, you know, we're up almost an extra class of students.
Yeah, that's my point. I think we need to just look farther than just seven years. I don't think seven years is a good indication when we're doing these kinds of things.
And I think it's important to know that, I don't think we're saying we don't need a school, uh, in the future. Um, uh, in, uh, in terms of an elementary school, we most, I, I think we most certainly will. Um, I, I think, uh, if you're looking at numbers right now, our, our high school is over, i- is our only, the only school currently that's over capacity right now.
That's where the VOTEC would, building would come into-
The, the VOTEC would recreate it, would re- for the high school.
Okay, um, let's give someone else a chance to ask questions. Mrs. Cleveland?
I have a question about, um, Potomac Elementary School. And they have those, um, trailers outside. So when the school gets over capacity, do they get the trailers outside? Is that how that works, or?
No, right now, they're actually using that as part of their capacity. So Potomac Elementary School's, uh, the only one using modulators. King George Elementary School has trailers outside. They're not used for instruction.
They're gonna be taken out.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna be taken out. Uh, Potomac Elementary School, we just put the new modular in. They have their entire fifth grade in, in the module. It's very nice. It's, it's very nice. Um, Potomac is a very unique facility. It's, it's a building that has had a number of renovations. They have a fifty section, a seventy section, a ninety section. And if you walk through that building, it's, it's really like a maze. So what's confusing about that building is that in terms of blueprints, the capacity is seven hundred and fifty-one students. But it's, it doesn't break down that way very easily in that building. It's not like you've got big wide classroom spaces for that seven hundred and fifty-one students. It's very maze-like. It's small little spaces that add to the capacity, but really don't accommodate well for students. Uh, so to answer your question in short, Carrie, uh, Ms. Cleveland, right now, uh, that's seven fifty-one includes the middle school, includes the, uh, modular, and that's where that building will, will likely stay.
So, a- and I'm just curious about this. So the modulars, this is an acceptable, it's fine, acceptable, um, space then? Okay.
Yeah, it's actually very nice.
Okay.
Mrs. Davis, do you have questions?
Yes, not yet. Yeah. I think we just need to organize what we're trying to agree upon, what comes first. I know that, we all know that the biggest support we have right now is for the VOTEC, for them to be created, built up and all that good stuff. Um, from our board and the board of supervisors. Right, so right now I'm seeing we have VOTEC, elementary school, and preschool. Those are the three things that we're gonna kind of put in one A, B, C.
And in terms of VOTEC, do we all agree that the new building would be the best bang for our buck since the renovation's gonna cost almost as much?
I, I think the new two-story building is the best bang, because, I mean, that other story was only like seven mil to put that on there, right? So that's, 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 uh, that's the best bang for the buck there.
Basically just take out the current and put a new. Did that cost estimate include taking out the old building, if you remember? Because that's not cheap either. Oh, it did, okay.
I believe it, yeah. I believe that was part of the discussion, I know that we had, and I believe it did.
So do we wanna a- at least agree that VOTEC will be our number one priority?
I think it's, if I can, Madam Chair?
I was just gonna take a vote.
Oh, what?
On the very bottom.
First of all, if VOTEC is everybody's priority, and then from there, we'll move forward with which?
Priority in terms of the most immediate priority or overall?
Correct, the most immediate. Um, so-
So what you're looking at there is, again, there, there, when we asked RRM to go back to the drawing board and, and give us some other options, they, they provided four additional options, and they go from basically the existing footprint to expanding, uh, the footprint up to be a little wider on that same property. And then the one you're looking at there is, uh, what Mr. Frank was referring to. That's the double story. And you can see how, slide down just a little bit, Ms. Higgins, and you'll see on the left-hand side how that double story is added to that building. On the, if you're looking from Route Three at that building, the left-hand side of that building is more like classrooms. Uh, and the right-hand side of that building right now is like, uh, bays, like, um, auto body classrooms and, and those type of, uh, uh, classroom spaces. So on the left-hand side, you would, you would double your classroom and lab space with two, two stories. And on the right-hand side, you have your large high bay, uh, you know, auto body shop area ki- kind of classroom.
And it's eighty-five thousand for the demolition.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five thousand for, includes site demolition, regrading, temporary erosion control, missing.
That's included in the nineteen nine or nineteen mil.
Well, this one is under-
It says one fifty-seven for demolition, but it is included, that, that, which is, was my question. So, um-
Might be looking at one of the first, this is the very last option.
This is the one that has the two-story.
I am looking at the last thing. Doesn't look like that, though.
Didn't, didn't you, didn't you go back to them after we discussed this, and they did an update, and this is the update?
This is the update.
I think that makes sense.
So you remember, they came, they came and presented at our school board meeting. And then we said, we'd like to see some other options, and then this is what they came back with a few days later.
You may have the first one, Ms. Davis.
Okay, so back to the, the prioritization. So we do, we have the VOTEC, we have a new elementary school, and then the preschool. And I do agree that perhaps we could combine preschool and elementary, but that, that's something that we have to talk about. But i- in terms of immediate priorities, would you, which would yours be, Mr. Frank?
Right now would be the VOTEC building.
And which option?
Two-story.
Okay, Mr. Bush?
I think one thing that's very important in this, and that is the, I would also vote for that, however, it's only contingent on the idea that that would be an easier, it's more palatable. And that's reason it would be my first option is because it's more palatable. If I asked for the best option, I would not vote for that. If I asked for the most palatable, palatable first option, definitely the VOTEC, two-story, it's a brand-new building. But that's because it's the most palatable. I think overall, we need the full school. But this, that one, I think we could pass through pretty easy with the board of supervisors.
Okay, Mrs. Cleveland?
I'd, I, I would like, I'd like Dr. Boyd to tell us what he thinks is, like, his number one choice.
I think I already know the answer, but go ahead.
I, I think given, you know, the changing environment and where we are currently right now, uh, I, I agree with, with both gentlemen. I think right now, where we are, um, I, I don't talk to a single person in our community right now, anywhere, that doesn't agree that we need to improve our vocational offerings in King George County. If you take a look around us, since I've- Since I've been here and really since that building is closed in two thousand nine, that vocational building. King George County has been on a vocational island. Uh, we have. Northern Neck Technical Center to the east of us, covering all of, all of the Northern Neck schools. And it's a very good and successful vocational program. Spotsylvania has Spotsylvania Technical Center, very high-tech, very established program. Caroline has their own program. Stafford has an academy program. Fredericksburg is just in the process of building their own vocational center as well. So we're really in a, in a position right now where it's a disservice to our students to not provide those opportunities. That coupled with the challenges we have with capacity. Particularly at the high school level. Um, depending on how many programs we could put into that new vocational building. And if we go with the double story option, that kind of expands those numbers. But you're talking about a couple hundred students that we could alleviate from the. Current high school and provide a little extra capacity within the existing high school building. When our students are getting certifications in that vocational building. So. Uh, I'm very much in agreement right now with what I've heard in our community. Uh, what I've heard from our Board of Supervisors and a number of other folks in the community. Uh, with, with the uh vocational being our most pressing need right now. A- and also the double story option, cause I think that expands programs that would, that would compete and rival with the same type of programs. And number of programs we see in those surrounding counties that I just mentioned. Thank you for asking, Ms. Cleveland.
Thank you. I'm a little bit torn and I'm gonna tell you why. So I, I, I agree that the vote tech building is needed. And I absolutely agree that these, uh, I, I know that we know when I was in high school, there was all these different programs and we don't have those to offer. We know that the programs we do offer are amazing, right? So we need to be able to offer more. Um, I just worry about the class sizes in the elementary school and what I hear about the class sizes. And although these numbers are su- are, are supporting the capacity, i- isn't, you know, where we. Need to be, I, I worry about, about that, so.
I guess the question would be if we move forward with the vote tech building. How much further down the line would it be before we could begin then? Macamamadore for a new elementary school? Do we even have any idea?
So that, that's a good question and I don't know that any of us in this room could answer it. I, I think there's a lot at play in our community right now. Obviously, our Board of Supervisors with the structure that's set up in King George County is, is going to decide. W- w- what and when in terms of facilities, uh, are, are we able to afford? I know there's a lot of business ventures and things that could help. Improve that timeline. Yeah, so, so all of that sounds promising and good. Uh, a- and I think. From the impression I get, the Board of Supervisors is very interested and, and understands that we have needs in the school division and. And, and helping to, to rectify those. Um, Ms. Cleveland, I, I, I understand what you're saying about capacity and, and classroom size. Right now, we're in a good place on the elementary side. I think that. The building that has the most pressing need right now is King George Elementary School because. We have placed the preschool there, which is a hundred and twenty students. So I don't wanna get too far down the road on this conversation, but the idea of. Um, putting our preschool at our elementary schools is not a bad conversation to have. Uh, because it does a couple things. It's um alleviates. The capacity issue we have at our elementary school that's most pressing right now. And I can tell you after doing it one year, I've spoken to some of our elementary school teachers. Uh, and, and our, our preschool director. Those students that started preschool at King George Elementary School last year. And are now kindergartners at King George Elementary School are doing wonderfully because. They stepped into that building a year before their peers. They know that building. They feel comfortable in that building. Uh, and they're able to move forward with academics because all of those things that we take for granted, that they have to learn to be a student in that building. Were, were, was accomplished in preschool for them because that's their school, King George Elementary School. So that's a very powerful point and a very powerful um thing to consider when we talk about our preschool kids. Being at their base school, being at Potomac and being at Sealston. What that also means though is that. You know, i- it's not necessary that, you know, we have a hun- hundred and twenty preschool students right now. We have a preschool staff. It's not, I, I haven't crunched these numbers, but I, i- it's not likely that it's gonna divide evenly. It'll, it'll create some additional staffing needs. Uh, is what I'm trying to say in short, that if we divide our preschool up. We will have a need for some additional staffing positions to cover that additional need. Also, right now. I talked a little bit about Potomac and, and really even Sealston to a certain level. Uh, those are tight, those are tight buildings. I, I described Potomac. We have capacity room at Potomac, but we don't have whole classrooms that we could dedicate to our preschool program. Um, so trying to work out some of those logistics in terms of space at Sealston and Potomac. Could be a challenge. So I'm, I'm just trying to discuss some of those pros and cons when it comes to um preschool and capacity on our elementary level.
I'd say something regards to that. When I was first in education and gathering all this information in the early seventies. Um, there was, where we are with preschool is where most of the nation was with kindergarten. Most of the schools did not require kindergarten. Those schools that were doing kindergarten when it was in support of what Mr. Frank is saying. Those schools that had kindergarten in, and many were doing kindergarten outside of the whole public system. And some public education systems in some states were doing it in a whole building like we did with the preschool. Those that did it in individual buildings. The statistics, I was just starting to try to look it up. The statistics that did that, when they had the kindergarten in the same building where they went to the first grade. The, the kids just did so much better. And I believe it's the same kind of thing that would happen with the preschool. So I'd absolutely. I know it might cost more money, but I think our kids would probably fare better academically if we had a preschool in each one of the elementary schools. Based on the, what happened with kindergarten back sixty years ago.
Mrs. Davis?
I am for the vote tech. And for whichever way seems best. I don't care how it's built necessarily. But I think that should be our first step, alleviate what's happening right now. But there are more developments being built, big ones. Deer Ridge is coming. It's gonna be built fast. Probably not have water, but it'll be built fast. Um, which brings more families in and more children and things like that. So I'm not too comfortable on those numbers being in that way. But I think right now is that we have the support from the community, from the. Board of Supervisors, from our board to do this wonderful option, opportunity for our students and that's the vote tech. It does alleviate, it's not just making our county look great and wonderful and having all these options, but it does alleviate some of the pain we're feeling right now. Immediately. Vote tech first and then I love the, that we're talking about putting preschools at every school. Yeah, we're gonna need more staff. But I, is it hard to find? I don't know.
No, it's, I, I don't think it's hard to find. Um, i- it may be. I, I'm not saying that, but I, I think the cost. Is, is something we're gonna have to consider when we get into the budget process. And, and we can work on potentially a proposal and what that looks like in terms of staffing. Uh, but that'll be a little further closer to the budget season that we can. Consider that. Now, another thing Mr. Frank brought up is the um possibility of, of adding another grade level to the middle school. Um, I don't know what everybody's thoughts are on that. A middle school right now is, you know, in terms of numbers. Uh, has, has the most capacity, you know, the, the, the most space uh that we could occupy. So. You know, that's also a consideration. Uh, a- and again, these, these are kind of short-term fixes in the, in. Yeah, in the long term, we're, we're going to need more square footage. We're gonna need.
I, I think we'll go to the Board of Supervisors and we're like, well, this could fix that. I think we need to stay out of the short terms right now and just stick with what we wanna do long-term. This is what we want, this is what we're gonna have to need and. I think it makes everything mumbo jumbo sounding, like we don't know what we really need when we start trying to do short-term fixes.
So let me ask you a question. I know the middle school and the high school, well, the high school specifically was built to add on to. Or any of the other elementary schools have that option? I think Sealston does.
I think Sealston was and I think King George Middle School was.
I was wondering if we could add on to our current elementary schools instead of building a new one. But of course, that means add on to all of them, which.
Or, yeah, one at a time. Or what about?
Or move up to.
Like we have a preschool at, at each school.
Move, move up to.
You moved this, the, I mean, fifth grade.
I think the, I, I don't think that's a bad idea, but I think that putting. Fifth graders, eighth graders may not go too well with the community. But it's, it's, it could be a temporary fix though.
We've got from now until December to figure.
Right.
What about modulars? How much are those and what's the long-term life on those?
It's, most school divisions choose that as a, as a last option. And really what happens there is you get into a situation where it's too late and, and you're, you're having to come up with a plan quickly. Usually modulars are kind of Band-Aid things and, and we'd like to stay, you know, stay away from that if we can. And plan far enough in advance that we could not have to have the modular conversation. Cause. The one, the one at Potomac is very nice right now and it's, it, it, it was um. A good purchase and it, and it, it was a nice modular, but I.
Your lifespan?
Yeah, I can tell you, it's not like a building. I mean, we're talking about the, the first part of Potomac was built in the fifties and we're still using it. Um, modulars don't have that type of lifespan.
Some research as we were talking, I think it's about, Weldon Cooper has done several studies about Virginia. And basically just, this is the uh one for Virginia. They're projecting a con- I hate to say this.
I know.
They are projecting a continuous decline in Virginia, especially even in our area. Until twenty thirty-one. In twenty thirty-one, they, Weldon Cooper projects that then there'll be a significant increase beginning in twenty thirty-one. I hate to say that.
There that uh, it also talks about COVID and.
There was something else. This is just one, the, the projections. It says, while federal projection indicated significant decline by twenty thirty-one. More recent projections such as those from UVA Weldon Cooper Center show a continued downward trend. With some reports as from late twenty twenty-four suggesting potential shortfalls. Anyway. They're saying Weldon Cooper that basically the whole state of Virginia with some very exceptions, which we're not one of them in this area. That it's a general decline, but in twenty thirty-one. And we do need to think that's six years and it's not that long. Is that we are gonna have this and it takes three years or so. I just, I kinda hated to say this. But it also lends credibility to saying maybe to do this, this um right, we need right now for the high school. For the um, the vote tech center.
And that's just, and Weldon Cooper's one, but Weldon Cooper is a very powerful one. I, you'll see other ones that have. Stafford, Spotsy, Fredericksburg, King George as a growth rate that's, that's going up.
It was until twenty twenty-four. Now they're saying it's just, well, even Weldon Cooper was saying in our area was gonna do this. Now all of a sudden is within the last year, they said, no, they were wrong.
Yeah, so. Lots to think about and lots to consider, but I, I do think right now with our current. Climate in our community, uh, and the current needs we have particularly on our secondary level. I, I, I think, I think we would get, I think it's low hanging fruit. I think right now it's, it's an opportunity to really make. Uh, a lot of positive impact for, for relative, you know, relatively less money than what we were considering with the elementary model.
So Mrs. Cleveland, you um didn't answer the question. Did you say vote tech or are you still?
I'm listening.
Okay, so um. Do we have any idea of how much the equipment in? Like, do we have any estimate at all? Because we're talking about the cost of the building, but now we have all the. Equipment to go with it too.
We don't even know what programs we want yet.
Yeah, well, well, we haven't.
This is all the stuff we need to talk about.
Yeah.
And that won't happen tonight, probably.
No. And really when we, the, the, if you go back and take a look at the original feasibility study. We were considering a one-story option. So that was at the time like five programs. Culinary was one of them, which is. By all estimates, one of the most expensive. Some of the other considerations were programs that were multi-purpose based, that uh, things that could evolve over time. And not be as expensive in terms of equipment on the front end. That's a consideration. Uh, we've also explored and. I don't wanna steal anybody's thunder, but uh, Ms. Rinko's gonna come to us at our next school board meeting. We're looking at some partnerships and some things that we can do even in the near future. In terms of partnering with um organizations that are interested in, in, and also supporting vocational programs. Uh, this, that's a very common thing. You know, when you, when you're starting particular vocational programs, seeing if you can find. Uh, industries that are coming into King George, which we know there are. Uh, and seeing if they're interested in supporting some vocational programs that again. Train high school students to have workplace-ready skills to go back into their workforce and contribute in King George County. So we're looking at all those options right now. But again, we haven't looked at those in terms of. Really kind of doubling the number of programs with the two-story option. Uh, that's something we can do and that's something that our RMM has been very helpful in terms of working with us. On uh figuring out options on how to move forward. And we can set up more tours, uh, if you guys are interested in that as well and going to see some other programs and what they have.
So I think we have a consensus minus one about the vote tech um being a number one priority.
Well, it's not, I'm not, I'm, I'm in.
I just wanted more information.
Um, but I think that what Mr. Frank said about a ten-year plan is a good idea, especially when we're gonna go. The whole purpose of this meeting is to then for us to have our two-by-twos with the Board of Supervisors and socialize our idea. So when we. Tell them this is what our priority is, we, we also have to say, however, our numbers are such that we're gonna need. We, we can't wait ten years for another building. So.
In twenty thirty-one, I'm reading even more from other areas besides Weldon Cooper. And boy, everything is showing twenty thirty, be re- be ready, it's gonna skyrocket. And if we're not ready, it's could be really bad.
We'll need an immediate. Plan for vote tech, but then I would say within two years, we're gonna have to turn around and begin. On a, right, well, I mean, we have the plan now so that in two years we can move forward with the plan, I think.
Yeah, I agree.
With a new elementary school or the vote tech? Oh, yes, I'm talking about, yeah.
I think that's in our two-by-two.
We don't have to wait a year.
I think our conversations, coming out of this meeting with, with the Board of Supervisors should be that, you know, we've discussed and we think. Moving forward, for a number of reasons we've all discussed, I won't recap them, but. Moving forward with the vocational building as soon as we can is ideal.
So the, the idea of having a separate preschool. From what I'm hearing is probably just. A, a past idea. We should put it in. I, I agree completely because I've. I've read those reports and studies as well and of course, the kids are more comfortable.
I definitely would have liked to have a preschool.
Right, in each, right, that's what I mean. Instead of a separate building.
Or some we start, you know, start that five years. I mean, I still want every four-year-old in the county to go to preschool.
I know.
You know, not just a hundred and eighteen.
Every, I agree.
I, I think that would be exceptional. I, I think um. It's very, it's expensive. Uh, that's, that's the challenge of it is, you know, we don't get any state funding for the pre-K per, outside of Head Start and all those other things. It just becomes uh very expensive, but the impact is amazing. I mean, if you look at the research. Uh, that, that. You know, is one of the most impactful things you can do. And really, I, I think after. You know, anecdotally, talking to our uh King George Elementary School staff and the one year we had. I think having them in their base schools is also very impactful and, and very beneficial, so.
Is it allowable to charge a nominal tuition for the, for preschool within the public school or could we not do that?
You can charge tuition.
I mean, cause people pay for private preschool now. I'm sure we could have it cheaper than that.
The thought.
Um, and I know it's hard to get into preschool.
Well, you know, back in the twenties when Ed was going to school? They charged, they charged twenty-five dollars for elementary and like eighty-eight for high school. In King George County. So we used to charge.
I was just thinking, you know, a nominal fee to. Help, but anyway, that's down the road. So for now, our priority would be vote tech. So that's what we would. Verbalize with our.
Two-story vote tech, make sure.
Right. I don't think we need to tell them which one we choose. I just think we need to tell them we choose vocational. Am I wrong?
Well, I was gonna ask you if you want me to also reach out to our M-M and see if they can expand this offer us and, and give us some more. Like they did with the first feasibility study.
Is how much it gonna cost though? Everything we ask them to do costs us money and cha-ching.
Potentially. I, I'll see um where they are with, they, they've been very, very forthcoming and helpful. I mean, they, they're. Very interested in this project as well.
I think.
I think, but I think what's important is the more armed we are with information when we make this presentation to the public and the Board of Supervisors, the better it'll be.
Yeah, I think. That when we talk to them, we need to tell them that it's a two-story building. Kathy, I think that when we talk to them, we need to tell them that it's a two-story building. Yeah, cause we're talking nine million dollars, that's there and you know, uh.
I mean, we could show them all the estimates that, you know, what, that we have because they're not, the, the two-story building's not that much more.
Or less than twenty million, we're getting a two-story building.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, the rest of the money is gonna be spent on the equipment and we do need to talk about programs as well.
Programs.
If we show them the estimates, though, we have to tell them which one we pick and then we can.
Agree, I agree. Or just show them the one we pick.
I think we need to be specific. I mean, just right now, picture sitting in front of TC Collins, what he's gonna say.
That's exactly right. That's, that's why I said.
Oh, you don't know which one you want?
No, I, no, I don't think.
Coming before us and you don't even know.
I don't think we tell them, show them all our options. We show them the one we picked.
Yeah.
Not all three, cause we picked the two-story.
Correct.
Madam Chair, also in reference to estimates, I can imagine that the Board of Supervisors is gonna ask about bids.
Yeah.
Because they're not gonna settle on one. Do we need to do that or do they do that?
So right now, this is just a feasibility study. We would, we would create an RFP.
Okay.
If we decide to move forward with that and then we would go through the bid process. And that, that's not a firm number right there. That's a estimate based on what they believe we want.
What do we think about going through an RFP with all this? If this is true?
That would be through, that would be through the Board of Supervisors and that's, that would be after we decide that we're.
That would be our recommendation to them, yes, okay.
Are we allowed to though by state law?
No, well.
Not without them.
Not here. I mean, in some, in some localities in Virginia, the school board does that, not in King George.
Does what?
Does the RFP process, does, does all.
The bidding process.
So this doesn't count right now.
What do you mean, doesn't count?
It's like, I know that the Board of Supervisors, when they get the first bid and then they get a feasibility study, like there's state code or something that they can't compare studies and then pick one, they have to.
It's a sealed bid process. So that's totally different from this. This is just a cost estimate. Uh, it's a feasibility study. They're trying to give us an idea of what it would cost to consider these options. Uh, if we, and, and if we're going to the Board of Supervisors, we can say that this is the cost estimate, but we, we truly don't know that. But, but the experts that we've hired are telling us that we, they believe that to be the case based on buildings they've built and other things that they're doing currently.
And they can't do anything more than feasibility. They can't give us a quote without going through an RFP.
Yeah, they won't give us a quote.
Can't do it.
I, I think they might, they, they'll definitely.
They'll bid on it.
They'll definitely.
Oh, yeah.
And, and again, that'll be all a sealed build, bid process and, you know, that'll follow.
Especially the one that's giving us the feasibility study, they'll probably closest to their feasibility study when they quote, when they give the sealed quote. That's just a normal thing.
Yeah.
Dr. Boyd, I think we've said that we're gonna go with the two-story building uh, for the VOTEC. But what are we gonna do and uh, do you still, I mean, does a ten-year plan sound good for everybody to present to the Board of Supervisors? Along with, along with this, yes. This, this is part of a ten-year plan.
Well, I say that we give them that during budget season, yes, but before that, we talk to them about our immediate, you know, what we, what we plan on spending money on first, like, so before that meeting, we have these conversations with them at the two-by-twos so that they're not blindsided when we hand them our ten-year plan. Is that what I'm?
Yeah, and, and I, I think what we're talking about in a ten-year plan is kind of updating, it's, it's really kind of part of the CIP process and updating the projects that we're requesting through CIP, which is, you know, if you remember, it might have been two years ago now, we came out with the five, ten, fifteen-year document that we need to update online. But that ties back into our CIP. I think it all is gonna go through that CIP process, which now through the Board of Supervisors runs parallel with the budget season. Uh, so we'll make sure that we have that ready to go and, and understanding and hearing you guys, I think this is a good conversation and we need to continue to flesh it out, but immediately in that ten-year plan, we're talking about, we're going two-by-two, we're going to joint meetings, believing that our option is vocational center immediately. Uh, and then from there, moving forward, we're talking about the addition of a fourth elementary school or, or I, I think continuing that part of the conversation would be helpful to me.
In the meantime, to, to lessen the burden on the elementary schools. If we move the fifth grade to the middle school, that gives three hundred and forty-six more each of the three elementary schools. I mean, does everybody, I, I mean, is that a good plan? Is, is everybody in agreement with that? I mean, what will the public, what, what will their parents think about, you know, the fifth grader's going to the middle school? This is, we have, I mean, but that's an option of.
I think we save that, we save that if we, like, right now, we're okay with capacity. Like, we're, we're, we're getting to the point where we're not and the numbers are down a little bit. We save that option if, in case we have to do it, right? Um, but we don't make that an immediate plan. That's what I think.
But if we bring the preschools to each elementary school, we're gonna have to do that because they're gonna have to, because, I mean, like Carrie said, they're.
Right.
Uh, elementary schools are full right now.
But we have to come up with, that's part of our plan. When are we gonna do that? Because we can't do it right away, cause we're, it's gonna cost more money. We can't.
So let us do this. Let us take a look at what it would mean to take, I really wanna bring the preschool into this conversation and, and not shock them with too much of this. They were very invested in this conversation before in terms of um, all, all that we discussed, a new, a new uh, preschool, separating the schools and all those things. So let me come back to the board with what that would look like in terms of staffing and space needs at Sealston and Potomac Elementary School. That's gonna drive this discussion about the fifth grade. Uh, to your point, I think if you're considering numbers-wise and looking at our, our, it, it makes total sense in terms of numbers. I can tell you that when we moved the sixth grade to the middle school, uh, there was a lot of parents with some feelings about that.
Sure, there's.
And so now we're talking about a, a year younger grade level, fifth graders that are gonna be acclimated in with your, you know, your eighth grade students. And that's, that's a deep conversation that we probably need to consider.
It's educationally.
Very serious.
I think space-wise, it obviously makes sense, but educationally, and I don't think so. And socially, I don't think so.
So something else that we will be asked, because somebody mentioned Mr. Collins, what are we gonna do with school board office building? Like, what are we, this building and this, but like, they're gonna wanna know what are, what are our plans for these buildings, right?
Okay, one day at a time.
Right, I mean, you're right, but we will be asked that question.
And I would say, right, and this is just me, I would say right, that right now, we leave it the way it is for the next few years. Not only because, you know, we have to have, but you've got all those computers and stuff in there too that would cost.
Servers?
Servers that cost a fortune to move all that stuff.
I, I think it's a conversation. I've actually had some very good conversations with Mr. Smallnick about it. And I think um, it's gonna be driven from, from the Board of Supervisors as well. Um, i- if you were to ask me alone in a bubble, if, if, you know, I, I think our needs at the school board office are well below the needs of the students in this community, right? So if we're talking vocational center, preschool, elementary school, all of that comes well above this. But I also see this conversation with that property and that building being driven by the Board of Supervisors as well. Um, so I, I think it's a conversation that we can have. Uh, I certainly don't want it to be prioritized above any of the needs that we've cited for our students. But if it's something that's mutually agree up, agreed upon in terms of where we go as a school board office and what the county has in, 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 you know, in mind for that property, I think it's a conversation that would benefit both the school board and the Board of Supervisors moving forward.
So initially, we talked about a fourth elementary school on the property where the middle school was just torn down. And that's still a consideration, but maybe not a need at this time. So remember that too, that was our initial.
Yeah, we're supposed to have a one, two, three, so we have VOTEC, that's number two.
I think number two right now is for you guys, you guys are asking me to figure out what it would mean for preschool to move to the base schools, right? But that's, that's really a lever that we would pull within the school division. That's not a request from the Board of Supervisor. I, I don't wanna say number two, I, I think this conversation about the school board office is one that should probably be had because I think they're very interested in having it as well. Uh, but again, it does not take priority over anything, but keep it in the back of your mind that I, I think there's some considerations with.
Well, they're gonna take care of that because they want that property.
Well, and I, and I think they've got some, and, and I think we fit well into, you know, the county in terms of
Where we're gonna be.
Certain, certain considerations moving forward. I've already given Mr. Smallnick uh, all of our spatial needs in terms of uh, office space, conference room space, everything that we need in terms of a school board building. He requested that from us prior to his last meeting. Uh, so, so there, it, it is a consideration and they're working through some things right now. Um, if you get back to the school conversation, I think number two is, is I'll, I'll work through the um, preschool questions that we have. Uh, but, but from there, I, I think in a second, uh, excuse me, a fourth elementary school is, is probably what we need to consider as, in terms of number two. Uh, I think on that property in my mind is still a very, very good place. Um, it really provides, it, 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 in King George County, for us to put a fourth elementary school in, we would have to borrow from each attendant zone. Some students from Potomac, some from King George L, some from Sealston. The location of that property lends itself well to carving an attendant zone right out of the middle of the community. It's still, it, it bar, it can pull some from Potomac as well because Potomac is, is um, is, is our neighborhood. It's, it's, it's almost immediately right next to, to where that property is. Uh, it, it also, I, I really think that inner, inner campus traffic pattern, uh, where we get all of the buses off of the, that Route three, two oh five, two oh six intersection right there, uh, i- is also a very important conversation to have. I think that's a, i- it's very cost-effective to put that traffic pattern in and one that I think would benefit the community very well.
Building a fourth elementary will solve the preschool problem.
Yes.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't, it's kinda like that to me is a higher priority because again, we'll change the, the districts, the division of where people go, but then you'll open up rooms and population for the preschool to be at every elementary, which is absolutely, I think what all of us would say is a positive.
I, and I, and I think, you know, you said earlier, I think it's important to have this conversation here this evening, but we, we're also very concise when we go talk to the Board of Supervisors about what we think we need to do moving forward. In the way that I've kind of, the analogy I have in my head is that there's three levels of, of, of levers that we can pull to address our capacity issues. It's building level levers right now, uh, to address capacity. It's division level, which is what we're talking about here in terms of moving the preschool to base schools, moving grade levels within the division. And then there's the ones that I think we need to be concise and prepared to deliver to the Board of Supervisors and that's community. That, that, that's the big things. That's the vocational center, that's the fourth elementary school. On the building level right now, I can tell you that as capacity expands, uh, what they're having to do is um, take some of the diversity out of our program of studies, for example. So when you have more students and you're over capacity, you have to take some of the electives that you offer out of your program of studies so that you can have enough English teachers just to teach the number of English sections that you have to provide. So like a building level lever for capacity is shrinking down the, the program of study, not a good option, but that's what happens sometimes. Uh, on our level, what we're talking about is shifting grade levels. Uh, so, so all of those things, we can have those conversations here this evening. But I think to your point, which you said earlier, being concise and, and not muddying the water for the Board of Supervisors, wh- when we go to them and we're talking about county type of things that involve the Board of Supervisors, what we need to concisely say we need in terms of programming moving forward is number one, vocational, vocational center. Number two, the uh, elementary school.
And with that new elementary school, we will have preschool in each school and we will ha, you know, um, have smaller class sizes and be able to have more diversity, et cetera. So all the con, all the pros of having the fourth. And so we will talk maybe three years down the road, like if they're asking for a time, would you say three years is a good timeframe? And in that three years, we'll have a better idea of population and growth too.
Well, it's gonna, yeah. And I think again, looking at Weldon Cooper, cause there's, they've already done a lot of research for Virginia.
Yeah.
And um, but it's definitely, it's gonna continue to go down. It could look, three years, they're gonna, we just have to be careful because then we're still gonna be down here. But, but we can't, but we can't hardly start talking about in twenty twenty-eight, when all of a sudden in twenty thirty-one, all of a sudden, we're going up by ten to twenty percent, which is what they're projecting might happen. Also, I would like us to kinda dismiss totally this concept of the fifth grade going to middle school. I know we talked about it here, but boy, the research is hu, it's horrible. So I appreciate, because I agree, there's some advantages.
Numbers-wise, it looks.
Educationally, socially, I mean, I was just looking at the research, it's terrible.
Well, I had mentioned if we built the fourth elementary school, putting sixth grade back in elementary, which could then alleviate. But then we have the program, the program issue, if we move ninth graders, if we have like a, a, a secondary school, I think it's called, with seventh, eighth and ninth, then we have the program issues, you know, like for instance, ROTC, so. Right, right. Even the dual enrollment that ninth graders would wanna take, I mean, all that.
Go that direction, I agree, but let's not go the southern direction.
Well, we can't really make any of those decisions tonight anyway. We have to wait and see where we, you know, but.
I just meant academically, I think we can decide, let's not even talk about that anymore.
So Mrs. Davis, Mrs. Cleveland, you guys have anything else to add?
I just, go ahead. Well, I just like where we're heading, one VOTEC, two elementary school, and then the three would be adding preschools to all the elementary schools, right?
Yes.
As long as we go to them with knowing what we want and having, so, cause we're gonna be questioned concisely. No matter what you hand them paper wise, by certain ones especially, so just make sure that we have all we need.
Would you like me to reach back out to RRMM now and see, or, or would you prefer I wait on that?
So we're doing the two-story VOTEC building.
Yes, the desire.
What do you need from RRMM for that?
So I'd like to get to the level of specificity that they provided with the initial feasibility study for the one-story facility. We, we got into.
And it gave us a quick one?
This, that, that was a quick, you know, twenty, twenty-four, forty-eight hours. You can do a two-story, you can do, but with the first feasibility study, we talked about programs and we got into the demographic needs and, and the upcoming um, vocations that are gonna be expanding in our community. We got real deep into.
So they can use that to add to this, though? Like, they already have that information?
Okay.
Well, that costs us.
I don't know yet, but I can, I can.
Do we have the money?
No, we, we don't have the money right now um, in the budget for, but, you know.
They really want it.
We'll, we'll hopefully work our way towards uh, fund balance conversations again with the Board of Supervisors. So um, this first went around, remember where the cost estimate was for the first feasibility study?
Sixty, is it sixty?
Just remember that.
It gave us, yeah, it was somewhere in that.
One of them was sixty.
Top of my head. Well, the first preschool one was, I think.
I mean, that's the one I'm thinking. One of them was sixty.
Uh, nonetheless, I, it, it looks like our fund balance will be substantially more than that. So as long as we keep that relationship with our Board of Supervisors to provide the fund balance, um, if additional costs are required, then that would be the, the source of funds I would probably look at for that.
Okay, Mrs. Cleveland?
I mean, the only thing that I wanted to add was based on a discussion that's sort of relevant, but not really. Um, and that is when you were talking about the preschool. And I've heard a lot of feedback from teachers where these students um, in kindergarten and first grade are really behind and like they can't tie their shoes, they can't uh, open their juice box. It's, it's really um, difficult for them to work with the children. And so if there's any way that we can expand that preschool, I would be completely on board and doing that. And I absolutely encourage the board to think about that.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I, I don't think we, any of us disagree. That's why I was asking if we could charge tuition even, you know, because it's.
At some, at some point, if we had the capacity.
Well, we would have to build another, think about, right, totally agree.
Yeah. If you look at the research, it, it is one of the most impactful things for, for K-12 education is if you can, if you can provide.
I mean, we had the high school principal say, right, he can tell even in high school, the kids who went to preschool and the kids who didn't.
Right, huge difference.
It's so funny hearing this, cause this was the exact conversation in the seventies.
With kindergarten, yeah.
Same thing, they couldn't tie their shoes in first grade. We need to have kindergarten.
And now that you don't have preschool, you know, now that if a kid doesn't go to preschool, you know, you lose the first six weeks. You know, you lose the first six weeks, two months, if you're helping kids tie shoes and open milk cartons.
That's the point.
Oh, and the other thing that's happened is the expectation of kindergarten now is what first grade was.
Exactly.
Twenty years ago. They're reading on the kindergarten level, which they weren't doing.
Yes.
Just so the public knows, this isn't, a lot of this is not kids that get to stay home with their moms and learn. These are kids that have to go to daycare because there's no preschool around here, which I have had to be a part of that sometimes. If you don't have money, or you're paying money in daycare anyway, but I'm just saying, it's not the homeschool kids.
And most of the preschools are half-days, so.
They are, yeah.
If people work, how are you gonna get your kid to and from preschool and play for daycare? Okay, so, a, a, on that note, we have our priorities. Um, we know what we have to go and, and say to the board. So, the next thing we need to do, which I'll coordinate, is, is start talking, you know, the two-by-twos and arranging those meetings. But I'm gonna reach out to all of y'all for help. Um, I had initially thought that you could meet with your partner, you know, your district partner, whatever. If that works, great. If it doesn't, whatever. And Dr. Boyd, you wanna be included in those meetings?
I, I'd be happy to do whatever the board needs.
Okay, um.
Well, even if it's a one-by-one, talking with your constituent partner and Board of Supervisors can be valuable.
Right, just we, we, I feel like the more we talk to them about and explain all the things that we're talking about tonight, you know, um, do you agree?
Yeah, and I, the only thing I can't stand about the one-on-ones is that we all hear different things and then we come a little, 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 and it's just like, oh my God, okay. No, I didn't say that. Yes, you did. So, how can we make that more efficient where we're not spreading?
Well, that, well, that's why the two-by-twos, I think, are more advantageous. Because then two people hear the same thing versus, you know, just if it's a one-on-one, you know, then.
So, I'm probably not gonna meet with them one-on-one. If they happen to come to me or I see them, I might sure. But I just feel like sometimes it's a waste of breath because we have done it so much and, and it feels like we're repeating ourselves sometimes, or we don't even know what we're saying.
Well, I do, I think we should appreciate the fact that the dynamic has changed a little bit too.
True.
I do think that, um, there's a good appetite right now with the board.
Relationship has been to.
I was gonna say, a relationship's important. I agree with you, Colleen, but relationship is, is key. I know Kathy Bender and I have a great relationship and it's very easy for me to talk with her. But you're right, two-by-two is better than one-by-ones. If we could do three-by-three, it would be even better.
It also eliminates, uh, you know, having to repeat to everybody, whereas if two of you meet, then you can tell the other, you know, like it, not one person telling five people, you know, so it eliminates that too.
Maybe if you or somebody wants to maybe put something out and send it to all five of the Board of Supervisors, I don't know. So, they're all getting the same information. I just feel like it's telephone sometimes. It's important to maybe, I'm not saying we shouldn't communicate. But how can we make it efficient where we're not, they're all not hearing different things?
I, I think we stick to what we prioritize.
I mean, we can, I can craft an email and send it to each of you to, to help.
Hey, this is what we.
Yeah, this is what we talked about.
Yeah.
If you'd like to discuss, we're available, you know, to meet. How about that?
And I think, uh, to your concern, um, Ms. Davis, is that let's make sure we discuss, discuss primarily what we discussed as a group and be careful about going off into our own bunny trails.
Agree, agree.
If we do that and focus on that, even if they're asking questions, say, well, I don't know about that, but this is what we're focusing on.
Okay, Mr. Frank, no last dimes. Is there anything else we need to talk about?
No, ma'am. Thank you all. That was a very good conversation.
Going once, going twice?
You, can I say something? Do we want to, some of this, um, Weldon Cooper research they've already done about Virginia, do we wanna have that ready? I mean, it's, it's, I found it online in just a few minutes, or is it just for us to know?
I don't think yet.
Okay, alright.
Like I said, I do believe that, uh, Mr. Davis with the Board of Supervisors and Mr. Smallnick are working on some of that demographic study, which I, I think that would be relevant to, to lean on when we get to that point.
They can Google it.
That's, that's what I just did. You're exactly right.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Alan Saber?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
We are now adjourned.